I would like to call the Monday, July 26, 2021, Common Council Meeting to Order. Clerk Jones, I believe that you would like to make some comments regarding the length for this meeting and other expectations.
Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for council in yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a specific agenda item, please submit your request in the chat, and directions to do so are in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name and your address, as those are required for all speakers at in-person council meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert into the following in the chat, and you will be called on during the relevant time for public input. Insert your name and your address and what you would like to speak on, whether you would like to speak for or against the agenda item. You will then be given three minutes to speak, and please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks. For citizens that wish to speak during the privilege of the floor, please insert the following into the chat, and the council president will call on you during the relevant time for public input. Again, insert your name and your address, and you will then be given three minutes to speak. And again, please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or actions would not be tolerated. Such speech or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in the individual, without notice, losing the remaining of his or her allotted time. At this time, our invocation will be given by Father Ryan, St. Adabors and St. Cashmere Parish.
Father Ryan, good evening and welcome. Thank you so much for having me. I'd be very happy to do the invocation. Good and gracious God, you are always at work among us, guiding all human activity and progress. You ordain for the world the importance of local governments, as the means through which the basic needs and rights are protected and safeguarded for all people. We ask your blessing tonight on the South Bend Common Council, as they undergo their deliberations in this meeting. Remind them of your great plan, that all governing bodies see first and foremost the great dignity of every person they govern, and work towards the flourishing of all. May your ideals of justice, care, and peace reign in their minds and hearts. We pray as well for all the people of South Bend, that we all work together to build a community based on gospel values, and one that works to uphold the dignity of all as people created by you. May you watch over us and guide us, and may we see the working of your most powerful hand in all that we do. We lift this prayer up to you, our Creator, who always watches over us and guides us in every moment, through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Father Ryan. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
By the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and in the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Adrianne here.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Warner.
Here.
Councilmember Wax.
Present.
Councilmember Nizgatsky.
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Hammond. Councilmember Hammond. Vice President McBride.
Present.
President White.
Present.
Eight present. Thank you. At this time, there is no special business, but I would like to go first to the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes for the June 28, 2021 meeting. Clerk Jones, will you please read the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes?
Yes.
Report of Subcommittee on Minutes to the Common Council of the City of South Bend. The Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of June 28, 2021, and July 12, 2021, and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Thank you. Is there a motion regarding the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes?
Move to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, and it has been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you. There is no special business. I would like to make the announcement, if there's anyone waiting to hear Resolution 21-44, based on the sponsor's recommendation, this resolution will be continued until August 9th meeting. There's no reports from city offices. I will now entertain a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading in public hearing. I wish to share with you that bills that were given a second reading in public hearing have been given a first reading and set for committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed, and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. We are going to first hear the only bill in the Committee of the Whole this evening is Bill Number 101-21. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 101-21 a second reading?
Yes. 101-21, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending Various Sections of the South Bend Municipal Code within Chapter 16 at Articles 1 and 2, and within Chapter 17 at Article 2, Division 4, Article 4, Article 14, and Article 15, to provide a comprehensive adjustment to rates for South Bend utility customers in the city's Furnishment of Refuges, Sewer Water, Stormwater, and the Low-Income Customer Assistance Program.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. This bill comes out of the Personnel and Finance Committee with no recommendation.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present? I ask that you state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Nizgatsky. Sir, I'm trying to get this thing in here. Okay. I've got a brief presentation for you today. My name is Eric Horvath. I'm the Public Works Director, and I have an office on 13th floor of this building. Let me make sure you guys, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Apologies, I'm trying to get this shared. Okay. Thanks again for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'll be much more brief in my comments today, as we've had an opportunity to talk at a couple different public informational meetings, as well as some site visits with the council. So I won't go into details on why the rates are needed, but we'll give some overview. I think that we're going to have, in addition to the public information meetings, tonight will be a chance for a public hearing. And then after that, it gives us the opportunity to really think about what we hear from the public, what we've been hearing, as well as from our council members. We've gotten a lot of excellent feedback, including some feedback on things like the need for some large appliance pickup in our trash program, perhaps a need to use some other sources of funding to help offset the utility rate increases, and maybe even not having an increase on the customer assistance revenue side of things, but still be able to find some way to continue to support that program with an increased way. Those are among a few of the comments. Of course, there were lots of comments we've received. What we'll try to do is take all that feedback back and put together maybe some amendments that are reflective of what we've heard from council members in the public, and do our best to make sure it's a plan that can be supported by the council and our citizens. As I mentioned before, what's really driving this more than anything is the state of our infrastructure. That's the biggest part of this plan, and the most significant component of the rate increases. We are looking at doing a comprehensive rate adjustment. So the idea here was to make sure that people could plan for this over the next couple of years, and they could understand that these are all the rates that they're going to see out of the utilities through 2025. So this plan goes from 2021 through 2025, and addresses the water capital needs, the wastewater capital needs, stormwater, as well as the operational needs of our solid waste and capital needs of our solid waste department. It also, as I had mentioned, has provisions in here for increasing the customer assistance program as well. So again, the primary driver is really taking care of this issue with aging infrastructure. We've got a number of pieces of equipment that are end of their useful life that need replaced, and safety is first and foremost in our minds, and making sure that we can continue to provide clean, reliable, safe drinking water to our residents, and we can continue to make sure that that water is getting clean before it goes back to the river, and that we continue to pick up solid waste and not have people worry about that. Again, it's about creating reliable systems that our residents can count on, and know that that's something they're not going to have to worry about, that when they turn on the tap, they're going to have clean drinking water, and it's always going to come on. The investments needed to keep up with this, on the water side, there's immediate needs of about $45 million in capital over the next five years that we're trying to fund with this rate increase. That'd be issuing some bonds that we'd be looking at. And on the wastewater side, it's meeting the requirements of a federal consent decree on our long-term control plan, which we've been renegotiating with the EPA, DOJ, IDM for a number of years now, and are at the point where we're pretty close to having a final decree that we can sign, that's much less than the existing decree that we have right now. So the existing decree requires us to do projects in wastewater, and to have them done in the next 10 years in the amount of $713 million. The new decree is $276 million, and gives us an additional seven years to get that work done. The work that would be done in this first part of the plan is about $85 million worth of investment that we would do on the long-term control plan with this first set of rate increases that we're talking about here today. And then finally, correcting the operating deficiencies in the solid waste, and making sure that we've got money available to continue operating our solid waste program, as well as making sure we've got capital for investing in the equipment needed to do that program. And then finally, on the stormwater front, the primary move is changing the non-residential piece to a tiered system, so it's much more in line with having people pay by the amount of impervious surface, which is something that the previous council had asked us to look into, and they had set, I don't know if I'd call them temporary, but interim rates for two years, and they'd asked us to come back with a proposal on a tiered system. So that's what we have in front of you, is a four-tier system that shows non-residential rates changing accordingly, and would generate a little bit more cash for the stormwater utility, and to do some drainage projects throughout the city. So with that, actually, let me go over customer service, and then I'm going to turn it over to Alex Hilt with Baker Tilly, he's here with me today. Again, our low-income customer assistance program, the proposal we have in front of you would increase the charge that is currently on everyone's bill, which is $1.75 per month, which allows us to give qualified customers a discount on their utility bill of $10, $15, or $19, depending on where they fall on the qualifications. And the new proposal would be to increase that credit by 50%. So it'd be $15, $19, and $28.50. And so that would be the additional customer assistance program. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Alex Hilt with Baker Tilly, and he can go through the rest of the data, and then I'll close and answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. As Eric mentioned, I am Alex Hilt with Baker Tilly at 112 Ironworks Avenue over in Mishawaka. What we wanted to go over, you know, is the actual bare bones of what this actually means in getting these rates in place. Again, as Eric said, this is a comprehensive look at the utilities, so this is your total utility bill, what that would be changing on a monthly basis for this five-year plan. So looking at the typical average residential user, over this five-year period, we're going to be looking at between a $2.50 and a $3.50 change each year. And that, you know, that is driven, as Eric mentioned, primarily by the sewage works. We have four years of basically $2 changes in the sewage works bill from 2022 through 2025. And then the kind of the next largest portion of that is the trash. The solid waste component is going to be five years of adjustments from 2021 through 2025, and those changes will range from $1.50 to about 50 cents per month. Then the water adjustment is going to be most likely timed for 2022 and '23, and would be at 60 to 70 cents per month for your typical residential users, with the kind of final adjustment in '23 and '24 coming in the form of a slight change to the stormwater and the actual residential bills that would go out in addition to that change to the tiered non-residential rates. But in the end, you know, what this does is, you know, gives us a five-year plan that, you know, not only is competitive with all of your peers and your neighbors, but is some of the lowest rates, total rates in the state. You know, we end up with a total utility bill of just under $97, and $97 is basically what the state average per our studies, our biennial studies, were two years ago. And, you know, in the 10 years that I've been doing this and dealing with those biennial studies, I can tell you that that state average has been going up much faster than inflation has, as numerous communities run into the same kind of problems of having aging infrastructure, and finally having to address it. And so, you know, when we look out at having rates in 2025 that are the same as the rest of the state was in 2019, that puts us in a very strong position. And, you know, the last kind of piece of particularly interesting information on here that we want to point out is, you know, if we would have to be the same place that we're going to be with the long-term control plan, had it not been renegotiated, you know, we'd be looking at sewer rates that are $6 or $7 higher by 2025 than we are now. So that, you know, that savings in and of itself is pretty significant for every single customer of the system. Again, with the changes to the customer assistance program, that's what we're laying out here, this is, you know, showing that with those increases in the credits, you know, those that are most affected by changes in utility rates like this, you know, for the majority of the next five years, not only won't see an increase, but would have total bill, you know, would have their sewer bill end up lower than where it would otherwise be if we did absolutely nothing. And, you know, based on some comments, we put together some other examples of rates for, you know, both those at the very lowest end, your minimum bill users, as well as some larger residential users, if they're on a larger meter and have slightly larger average usage than what was used in kind of our primary table. You know, we end up with a range of, you know, basically over this five-year period, we're looking at a $15 change for your typical users. If you do have higher usage, and therefore, you know, higher bills to begin with, the end result is going to be about in that $20 range by the time we get to the end of our five-year period. I don't think that's a question for me. And this was, you know, a look at some potential, the impact to some commercial customers that includes the changes to those tiered stormwater rates, which, you know, will have a little bit more of an impact on the commercial side, as well as the higher flows that are associated with, you know, an apartment complex, or a big box store that have slightly larger footprints and usage characteristics. But, you know, again, we see a pretty level, steady increase across the board for them, which was kind of the plan of all of these adjustments, was to give them something to be able to budget on for the next five years. But I think that really hits the extent of the details that I had to go in, unless there's specific questions.
Thank you.
I would ask you to just stick around, but just in summary then, again, this is about making sure that we have the capital and operations dollars necessary to run utilities in our solid waste program through 2025. And it would be, on average, a monthly bill would rise, on average, about $3 per year for the typical single-family home, approximately 3.5% a year. Again, the customer assistance program surcharge that we have proposed currently is 87 cents, which would generate funds to give qualified residents a discount of $15 to $28.50 per month on their utility bill. And these rates will ultimately generate about $130 million for needed capital infrastructure over the next five years for the city. With that, Alex and I are both happy to answer any questions that you may have, or we can open it up for public hearing, however you guys want to do it next.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, start with questions. Councilman Davis?
Eric, good to see you again. Thank you for the presentation, sir.
Welcome.
There was a $500 million difference in consent. Went from like $700 million now down to like $200 million approximately. What was the change? Why is it, that's drastic, that's a huge change. We just told you that you're not paying this, or what?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. It is a huge change, and it's a result of a lot of really hard work in the city on separating sewers, but also on our smart sewer system. And quite honestly, a lot of it is because we have much better data. So before, when they were looking at the sewer system, they were making estimates on when the rain hits, how much gets that sewer, and then how much flow do you have in that pipe that you have to take care of? And they'd create these computer models that would tell you then how much you needed to store in order to not have overflows go to the river. And when they did that, they had an extremely conservative model. And so this is the consent decree that was signed at the end of the Licky administration, 2011, 2012 timeframe. And quite honestly, at the time, that's what everyone was doing. It's not unusual. Those models were very wildly inconsistent on, you know, most models I've ever seen. But with us having actual data, we would actually be able to tell when we have a certain type of rainfall, exactly how much flow would be overflowing into the river, and how much we had to capture. And so that really allowed us to tune in our program and make sure that we had all the right solutions for that. We used a couple different processes. We used artificial intelligence models that helped us understand the system, but also helped us solve for what the best alternatives would be. When they did the alternative, sorry about this long-winded answer, but it goes to the heart of how we got this down, because it wasn't a quick or easy process, and it did take significant work over quite a few years. And it also results in a better environmental program for the city as well. So it's, at the end of the day, better for the river as well than the previous program. But what happened was, even the alternatives that they looked at, they could only look at a certain finite number of alternatives. So they would look at seven or eight different engineering alternatives, and they would price those out individually. So they'd say, well, what if we put a big tank here, an interceptor sewer here, and we separate sewers over here, and we built some rain gardens here? And then they would price all that out, and they'd come up with a number, and then they would run the model, and the model would spit out a number of how good it was for the environment. And then they would argue back and forth with the EPA on which one they should go with. What we were able to do is, because we could use computers to do that for us, we let them come up with all the options, and they did an infinite number of options. So they literally looked at millions of different scenarios of interceptors and lining sewers, and doing separations, and came up with the optimal program that should have, that was really geared towards bringing that cost down. Let me finish by saying, and again, apologize for the long-winded comments here, but this wouldn't have been done without having that infrastructure, that smart sewer system infrastructure in place, but also without having council leaders who were pushing it all along, saying, this is way too much money, we cannot have a program move forward like this, we have to go back, and we have to find a better way to do this. And so we had, you know, 19 citizen meetings with the council members there that were actively participating in those meetings, and helping us along the way create this better program. So it was a joint effort between the administration, the council, and then really the public, giving a lot of really good info. We had environmentalists, we had lawyers, we had engineers, we had, you know, people from all sorts of spectrum that were really looking at this program and trying to find a way to get those costs down, but still make sure we're meeting that environmental benefit.
All right. Well, good job.
Thank you.
Because the fear was that we're going to be paying like a lot more of it.
That's right.
The water was like really high bill.
Yep.
The other question was, if today, the city made a decision today to say, hey, we're going to shut your water off for not paying the bills, would you know how many people would be shut off?
Yeah, I don't have those numbers with me, but I can get those numbers. So we've continued to make continued to make sure we're not shutting people off, because there's a, yeah, there's a number of good programs. And I think one of the things that we can look at as well is, beyond the federal programs, is there something that we should be doing as a city for pandemic relief on our utility rates as well? But, so, but setting that aside, there's two programs right now. The first one that, that hopefully people are familiar with, and if you're not, please reach out, but there's the Emergency Rental Assistance. Counties running that program, but for people who are renters, they can get those utility bills as well as their rental bills paid, and, and it, it will go through the end of this year, maybe longer, but at least through the end of this year. And then there's the LIWAP program, which is the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program, where they put additional funding in. And that's supposed to go through the states, and then the states are supposed to move that down to utilities. Now, we don't have any details finalized on that program yet, but it'll be additional funding that the city gets that will be for our low-income residents to be able to get caught up on their water and sewer bills. So before we start doing shut-offs, we want to try to find mechanisms like that to get people out of trouble, because quite honestly, there are a number of people who are so far behind. If, if we went into turnoffs immediately, we would never get out of a bad situation, because they, they just wouldn't, even with payment plans, if we pushed them out a long time, they, they wouldn't be able to get there. So I think it's evident to us that we're going to have to do something to help people out before we, we start shutting water off again. And I think the first two places we're going to look are the two federal programs that are there. And then after that, we may need to do additional work as a city to try to figure out, how do we do additional pandemic relief for utility customers?
I'll look forward to that number.
Okay, yeah, I'll get it for you.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Is there any other council members that have any questions for the petitioner? Councilman Lee?
Yes. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Horvath. We really appreciate it. And how you guys are working the numbers to try to get them in a better situation. Those two programs that you mentioned, the Emergency Rental Assistance and the LIWAP, how do people get in, how do they get enrolled, and how can they get that information?
Yeah. I'll, I'll send you a brochure on the, on the Emergency Rental Assistance. We sent those out with help by the county. The counties run the program. We, we developed a brochure, and they partnered with us, and they, they actually paid for all the mailing to go out, to send those to renters in, in South Bend area. But there's four different program, well, people who are looking at the qualifications in the program. I know it's Salvation Army, St. Vincent de Paul, Real Services, and maybe Catholic Charities? Or maybe, no, it's not Catholic Charit-, uh, I can't remember the fours. But I'll send you that. So they can contact them directly. There's also, on the county's website, there's the, the forums that are directly on there as well. So you can go, if, if they just do St. Joseph County Emergency Rental Assistance, you'll be able to, to find it online as well. But definitely want to get the word out on that, because it, it's really, really important that we get people help. And, and the money's available right now. There's a significant amount of money in the ERA program. We don't know about the other program yet. We don't know how much funding will be available. We don't know what kind of parameters they'll have around it. That's yet to be seen. But as soon as we have that, we'll be sharing that with, of course, all of our residents, borough councils as well.
My other question is this, and I only have two, so I'll be done. We, we, we focus a lot on assistance to low-income people, but I've had a lot of people who are not low-income, but, you know, middle-income, that's been, it's, it's not as much assistance for the, the middle-income people impacted. What ways can people who are, may not be low-income, but still may need assistance, what, what options are there for them?
Yeah. So with these two programs, I believe they'll both be income-based programs. So I think any, any work outside of that is going to have to be done with our own city funds, whether it's some other source, or whether it's with ARP funds for pandemic relief. And I think, you know, as I was mentioning to Councilmember Davis, that's the work that we have in front of us, is trying to figure out, what do we do with people that still have need that maybe didn't get covered by the existing programs that were there. And it may even go beyond residents, right? It may go to small businesses as well, because we know there's still a lot of need out there. And, and so it's going to be something that we need to take a look at.
That would be very good to see, if, if we, if something can be arranged or put together, that, I think that would be a very good thing for the residents of our city. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Councilman Warner?
Thank you. Just to answer your question, the first one, if you Google "South Bend Utility Support," "South Bend Utility Support," the first website that comes up is the city website that has the link to the eviction and utility support. The second website that comes up is the county's utility program. So "South Bend Utility Support" will get you to the two websites you need. Those four little words, it's amazing what little words can do. So I read today, Eric, thanks for coming, and thanks for the presentation for now, the third time, I think. So I read today, there is a bipartisan agreement on the infrastructure plan, and they expect to have that rolled out in the next forty-eight hours, and maybe even about this week. Do, do we have somebody in DC, maybe a former mayor, that we can talk to, that we might be able to find out if there's something in that plan that could go, especially the CSO, right? That's, that's kind of the major dirt, and that stuff you're tearing up streets, and really causing havoc, and it's a lot of man-hours, and that's the expensive stuff, right, Mr. Engineer? Oh, you're a finance guy, not engineer, but, but in there that we, you know, we probably won't see this year, or even next year, but maybe two years down the road as we work on this.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
I know, the council's made it pretty clear, I think, for most everybody, that they'd want to get those rates increases as low as they can. And if we can find other financing ways to, to bring that down a little bit, we understand that we can't, you know, come up with the full one hundred and thirty million needed, but if we can maybe supplement that million-dollar deficit on the trash side, or do some things here or there. But, but that's kind of my only question, that's more of a comment, I guess. But thank, thank you.
I, let me, let me add, I appreciate that comment. And, and it is important, especially as there is money out there available for different programs, to make sure we're tracking that, and, and doing our best to try to get those monies here in South Bend. And there are a couple of different options that we're looking at right now for programs that were rolled out in the first round, like the SWIFT program. We were asking for five million dollars of support for the Fellows Booster Station, which many of you went to visit. And so overall, that's a ten-million-dollar project, and the maximum you can ask for in that program is five million. And that's through the IFA, which is usually a loan program, but in this case, it's a, it's a full grant program. And so I, I don't know what our chances are of getting that, but we'll do our best. And, and there are other opportunities like that, that we absolutely should be looking at as a community, to make sure that we get as many dollars here as we can to support the needs that we have. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. And thanks for the tours. Those were, were great. Thank you.
Anytime.
President White?
I would like to thank Eric for your presentation, and for those who are with you as well. I think that the council realizes that, that we have to do something with aging infrastructure and increasing operating costs, that we cannot continue to move forward based on where we at, but also must have a plan that's sustainable. And so I'm encouraged to hear that the administration will be bringing forward to this council some amendments based on the level of conversations that we've had, what you've heard, but also looking at some new revenue streams that will really assist the impact. Because I'm very much concerned that, you know, we, individuals are saying that we have come out of COVID, but not necessarily so. And even those who have experienced COVID, they're not whole yet financially. So I'm encouraged to hear all that, and I look forward to those amendments as well. So I thank you for your efforts, your work, and look forward to moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other council members? Is Councilman Wax?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to piggyback off of Council, Councilman Warner, just to make sure that if there is an infrastructure bill that does go forward, I don't know the language, but I, I would be, if, if there's a possibility that it would not cover infrastructure plans or rates that have already been included. I know sometimes they, when the federal government is offering new spending, what they don't want you to, they want to stimulate new spending, not allow you to reduce rates, or to cover things that you were planning on doing anyway. So if we are talking about perhaps offsetting some of the impact of this bill with the potential infrastructure plan to come down the road, I just want to make sure that we're not hamstringing ourselves by having, having it all included now, and with the possibility that, that would keep us from including, from getting the federal dollars to be used for it. I don't know if that is the case, but that might be something that we need to keep an eye on.
I, I appreciate that comment. I, I can't speak to the new legislation, but what I can speak to is that everything that's come out so far that I've seen, I will say, actually, they, they've actually been driving it towards projects that are already planned, because they want this stuff to happen very quickly. They want to see some construction happening, and, and the idea is that you have these projects ready. So most of these, for instance, the Fellows, we have to make a commitment to be able to start on construction within a year. And so we would have to ramp up really quickly, get that design done, and get, get going on, on the work. So most of the programs I've seen to date are really pushing to get projects moved quickly, because they want them to go to construction.
Okay, that's great. I just, because I, if I remember correctly, like ARP funds cannot be used to reduce taxes. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we wouldn't, that infrastructure bill couldn't be used to reduce rates, so that kind of stuff. I, I don't know if that would be the case, but just putting that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hammond?
Thank you, Chair. Eric, thank you for the presentation. And if you've covered this already, I apologize for my tardiness to the meeting. Can you estimate how many of our current customers would qualify for the Consumer Assistance Program? What would be the percentage of the total?
I don't have that number in front of me for updated numbers. I know when we first put the program together, our numbers were based on having four thousand six hundred and twelve people participate in the program. That wasn't everyone who'd be eligible. What we did is we, we calculated what we thought, the number of people that would be eligible for the program. And then we used numbers that Indianapolis had put together on the percentages in each of those category areas, and the numbers of people who would actually participate in the program. And we came up with the four thousand six hundred and twelve. A lot of that may be defined by how we structure the program, and, and there may be ways that we can restructure this program. So it's either, you know, fewer barriers to entry to the program, or easier to get to the program. I think, you know, one of our goals in city government is, is, believe it or not, trying to find ways to make things, make it easier for our residents to access services. Sometimes it becomes very difficult, and we end up with these long forms and lots of different things you have to go through. And I think we would all benefit from having a, an easier process there, and, and maybe even looking at making sure that, as, as Councilmember Lee had said, maybe expanding even who would be able to get into the program. So maybe we take that opportunity to say that we're going to change the income requirements, and rather than follow the LIHE program, we go with some sort of other program that ma- maybe raises that level a little bit higher, and we give some relief for those who are on the edge.
My question was also kind of fish-chailing off of what Councilman Lee had asked, and I'm wondering if it would be possible to incorporate back payments that are due, and, and those types of things, even if it's for temporary qualification for that program?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, I think, again, I don't, I, I don't have answers for you now in terms of, when, when we put an amendment together on this, I, I don't know that we'll be able to put the pandemic relief in there at this state of the game. But I, I definitely think it's something that we need to think about as a city and, and community, and have discussion between the administration and council on, because there's, there's a need there. The, the issue is partly a timing issue, though, in trying to figure out where that need is, once we get through these other programs, and we fund some of the needs with the ERA and LIWAP monies, and, and then see where we are. We could structure something ahead of that, but I just think it's going to be hard to understand what that total need is until we see some, how these other programs are going to support the needs of the residents.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, is there any other council members? Have I missed anyone? I think Rachel is in the, is she in there, Don? Do you see that? I can't, I'll check and see. Think I see a hand up anywhere else.
I am on this call, Chair. I, I have no, I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thanks for checking.
Yeah, okay. All right, then, if we are good, at this time, we are going to go to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Clerk Jones, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 101-21?
At this time, I do not see anyone from the public wishing to speak in Bill, in favor of Bill 101-21.
Okay, do you see anyone present wishing to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone from the public expressing interest to speak in opposition of this bill as well.
Okay, thank you. Then at this point, the public hearing on Bill 101-21 is now closed. Council members, do you?
I think we have people in the, here in the public to speak.
Oh, oh, I am so sorry. Gentlemen, do you wish to?
I thought they were with the presentation.
I thought they were with the presentation, too.
But it's not open to the.
So you're with the town of New Carlisle? Okay, so you're not here to? Okay. Yeah, because we're actually not open to the, yeah, we're not meeting in person until, I believe, next Monday. So you kind of caught us off-guard there a little bit.
Attorney Palmer?
Attorney Palmer, what should we, we're not supposed to?
I believe you should have let him speak.
I make a motion to let them attend the meeting, since they're already here, and to let them speak if they want to speak.
Second.
Okay. I just want to be consistent.
Okay, well, there is a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded. I believe we have to take a roll call on that for action.
Correct.
Clerk Jones, could you give the roll call, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Nay.
Okay. Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Okay, we have eight ayes and one nay. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. You are, you can stay for the rest of the meeting. Do you wish to speak in favor or opposition to the bill that is before us? Okay, thank you. Then at this point, I will be closing the public hearing on Bill 101-21. Councilmembers, do you wish to make any statements? Councilmembers, do you wish to make any statements?
I didn't catch the committee hearing, so I'm probably, hopefully I don't say anything that has already been stated or even my lack of understanding. I think I've been following this pretty closely and very well. And I just, I don't know how we end up here with raising rates coming out of a pandemic. Well, I don't know if we even came out of it because that variant is out there and so you're seeing more spikes in cases. But it's not necessarily that the virus itself that alarms me is what has done to the American economy and communities like ours. And people not working, having low job prospects, and even people that are still suffering from the illness that they caught during the course of, you know, those heightened months during the pandemic. So I don't get it. I think it's ill-advised that we would even entertain this the way that we are and have been. I just, I can't understand it. I really, I can't. As said before, I would not be supporting anything like this, at least not right now. I just don't, this is a bad time. How did we get here? You know, and so my mind, I don't know, that's just my comments. I just, I just think it's very, very poor timing.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other council members wishing to make a comment? Councilman Lee?
I echo that sentiment of Councilman Davis. But after touring the facilities and seeing how our infrastructure is right now, I understand we got to figure out a way to do something. But we have to, we have to be able to do it in a way that doesn't put more pressure on our, on our residents. I mean, I'm an average resident and, you know, the more your bills go up, the more pressure it puts on you. So, and I've had many people talk to me, even now, whatever change happened with the water bill has been weird since January. And so, and I've had people ask me what's going on, what's, what happened with my water bill. And then, of course, if people are not paying their water bill, they continue to get themselves in debt. So there's even people who, who work who are struggling. So we, we got to put our best minds together, figure out a way if we have to stretch it out longer or something, but putting these rate increases on our community is, it's just going to make what we're going through even harder. So I'm just looking and hoping that, you know, we'll be able to find a way to do this where it doesn't become such a tremendous burden on our people. You know, I've got places that I don't really use the water at, but I'm paying $100 a month, you know, since the pandemic happened. And then my house was ridiculous, you know, I got boys and kids. And so I know the impact of if this is going to go up more and more and more, we're going to be in a place, one day we're, we're going to be belling everybody out. So I just want to think hard and figure out a way to think about the people who can't, not just the low-income people, but the middle-class people who are struggling also and the business owners, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman McBride?
Thank you. I just, for the record, would say the same sentiments I've been saying since our discussion is, I was originally in support of this when it came to council a few years ago. But however, due to the times that we're having now with the economy and with food prices going up, gas prices going up, unemployment, still pandemic, and the financial impact that it's having on us, I'm pleased to hear that there are other alternatives that have been suggested by council that administration is looking at different options now to take the burden off of residents. So I look forward to continuing conversations about whether it's the American Jobs Plan, Rescue Plan, or city or other funding mechanisms, but not to impact the residents. So thank you for your presentation.
Any other council members? You have? Councilwoman Hammond?
No, you have two online.
Yeah, I was going to say you have two of them. Okay, it's like Councilwoman Hammond and Council, so Councilwoman Hammond, you'd like to make a?
Yes, Chair, thank you. I would like to echo the sentiments of Councilman Davis and Councilman Lee. I just think this is a very ill-advised time to add additional stress to our community. In addition to all the other price increases that have been mentioned, we've had significant property value increases in our community that have placed huge burdens on people. And we just, I don't think we can, at this time, put additional stressors on those that are struggling in our community. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wax?
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to be brief because I've said this, I don't know, a dozen times already, but I support this infrastructure upgrade. It's something that's absolutely necessary. However, I can't support it where the entirety of it is coming from the ratepayers until we can find a system that some of that burden is shifted. I will not be able to support it. And I look forward to seeing alternative solutions in which some of that could be provided from elsewhere.
Thank you. Thank you. If there's no other council members to make any statements this time? Is there anybody that'd like to entertain a motion at this?
I make a motion to table Bill 101-1, 101-21 to August 9th.
Second.
There's been a motion on the floor and it's been duly seconded. Could you please call the roll? Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you. So this will not be sent to the full council. Okay, at this point, I will entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole and report back to the full council?
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Could we please take the roll call, please? Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you.
This is the portion of the council meeting where the common council will hear bills filed as proposed resolutions. Clerk Jones, would you please read Resolution 2142? Resolution 2142. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend establishing the policy by which members of the common council in standing committees may participate by electronic means of communication. I would entertain a motion to hear the second substitute.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee? Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will now move to the committee report. At this time, the Rules Committee heard Resolution 2142. And during the committee meeting, there were some minor modifications that resulted into a second substitute resolution that we'll be hearing as well as taking action on. I'll now ask our attorney to read the language and the purpose of the second substitute. Attorney Palmer?
Thank you, President White. Bob Palmer with offices here on the fourth floor. The original resolution was presented at the last meeting and in response to comments by the council and also by the public, it was determined that there should be some language in the resolution to provide advance notice to the clerk's office and to presiding member of any meeting of a desire to attend the meeting electronically. In discussion, had the committee meeting this afternoon, that language was determined by the committee to be a little too harsh in its effect. And there was a motion made to temper the language so that if the two-hour notice was not possible, that, that committee or members could participate in the meeting anyway. Consequently, Section 2B of the resolution now reads in the second substitution, "Any member who desires to participate in a meeting electronically shall provide actual notice of such desire to the office of the city clerk and the presiding member of the meeting no less than two hours prior to the scheduled time for the meeting to begin. If such notice is impracticable, such failure shall not prohibit the member from participating by electronic means."
Thank you, Attorney Palmer. I will now go to the council members to see if you have any questions regarding the second substitute resolution. Council members, any questions? Seeing none, I will go to those who have joined us virtually. Clerk Jones, is there any council member that would like to ask questions regarding the second substitute resolution? I don't see any council members with their hands up. Thank you. We'll now go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in favor of the second substitute resolution? There is no one from the public wishing to speak in favor of the second substitute of this resolution, 2142. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? There is no one present wishing to speak in opposition as well. The public hearing portion is now closed. Are there any council members who would like to make any statements at this time? Seeing none, well now, I will now entertain a motion regarding the second substitute of Resolution 2142.
Motion for passage?
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Second substitute, Resolution 2142, has now been adopted. We'll move to bills for first reading. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 10221 a first reading? 102-21. First reading on an ordinance to vacate the following describes "The east 100 feet of the first east-west alley lying north of North Side, said alley being bounded on the west by 27th Street and on the east by the first north-south alley lying east of 27th, running for a distance of 155 feet." Thank you. Now I entertain a motion to send Bill 102-21 to Public Works and Property Vacation Committee and Council Public Hearing set for August the 9th.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will you now please read, give Bill 103-21 a first reading? 10321. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code to make miscellaneous changes for clarification and consistency to simplify development process. Thank you. Will now entertain a motion to send Bill 103-21 to Zoning and Analysis Committee and Public Hearing set for August 23rd, 2021. We do have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will you please give first reading to Bill 104-21? 104-21. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 906 East Duville, 912 East Duville, 914 East Duville, 918 East Duville, 1073 Dale, 1705 Dale, 1711 Dale Avenue, 1715 Dale and 1717 Dale, Councilmanic District Number 3 in the city of South Bend, Indiana. I would now entertain a motion to send this bill to the South Bend Plan Commission for Public Hearing set for August 16th and to the ZNA Committee in Public Hearing set for August 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will you please give first reading to Bill 105-21? Yes. 10521. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 1905 College Street, Councilmanic District Number 1 in the city of South Bend, Indiana. I entertain a motion to send this to the South Bend Plan Commission and for public hearing set for August 16th, 2021 and to the ZNA Committee and Public Hearing set for August 23rd, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will now move to unfinished business. We did have an action item under unfinished business. I'll let our attorney just to give an update on why the council will not be taking action at this particular time.
Thank you, President White. At the Rules Committee meeting prior to the Rules Committee meeting this afternoon, it was recommended that the full council would direct me to obtain written releases for information for Josh Reynolds' prior employment records with the Indianapolis Police Department and the Butler Police Department. Or in the alternative to issue a subpoena for those records, Mr. Reynolds has voluntarily provided us with those releases, which I've determined to be sufficient. He did so through his attorney, so he knows exactly what he was signing. So the purpose of the recommendation from the Rules Committee has been satisfied.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Are there any questions, council members? Thank you so much. I would like to share that at our recent Rules Committee, there were a set of questions that the public had asked for input, and we had indicated to them that we would do so. I did receive responses back from the city clerk on Wednesday or Thursday of this week. We have completed those sections that pertains to the council. Council members, you'll get a copy of that tonight. Would like for you to look at those responses and give me, share your feedback, and after which, those responses will be posted on our website as promised, and Clerk Jones, you'll get a copy of that as well.
Thank you.
Under new business, I would just like to share that we will begin meeting in person Monday, August the 9th. At this time, I would go to council members. Do you have any new business that you would like to share? Councilwoman Nizgatsky?
So I can talk about the, the bus tour?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Um, yes, I am, I'm having a sixth district bus tour. It'll be this Saturday, July the 31st. We're starting at the Nexus Center, which is at 3607 South Main Street. If someone would like to join us on the tour, we'll be going through the sixth district and making nine stops. And it's approximately, probably about a two hours. So you can email me at esnysgod@southbendin.gov if you would like to attend. Who, what is that?
Uh, clerk Jones, can we? Clerk Jones, could you take that down, please? Can somebody?
Yes, I'll try to.
Okay.
Yeah, be quick on your feet.
Can you take that down?
Is it down? Can we take it?
I can see.
Oh, I would, I would probably just, I just take him out.
I can't take it.
My husband's playing piano in the background. If anyone wants to listen to soothing music.
I could use some.
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys are continuing the meeting, but the public can't hear you via, via Teams.
How's that?
Much better. We, we haven't heard anything since our interlude.
Okay. Remember Davis?
I guess so, without saying that, I wanted to thank the South Bend Police Department for their help where Mr. Willie Williams, who passed away some weeks ago, they did a really, really great job of organizing and making sure that we got from point A to point B without any hitch, but it was just really beautiful how they were able to coordinate that and set it up. It just left me with like a really, really great feeling, you know, that they showed up and they showed out like that, so I give them a thumbs up and thank you for that. I also want to say thanks to the, the Public Works Division and all those, I think it's South Bend Vines and Park, I think that's how you say it, and Councilman White, and all the other ones that came out for the How Lindsey, street name change. I thought that was an awesome event. It was hot there. Oh, my God, it was hot out there. But we survived it, and, you know, thank you for coming on and participating. That, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I'm just saying, thank you to people for their support.
It's nice to, and it's nice for individuals to hear, you know, words of gratitude.
Yeah, yeah, very gracious. That, that was some serious stuff. It was great.
Are there any other new business? Seeing none, we'll go to Council.
I just want to encourage the public to come on August 9th and be in person, and
Thank, thank, thank you so much.
Not in the bathroom.
I know you can't wait to meet back in person, so.
Yeah. I'm a face-to-face kind of.
With clothes on.
With clothes on.
Okay. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak on the privilege of the floor?
I don't see anyone in the public waiting to speak of privilege on the floor.
Hey, seeing that there's no one waiting to hear, I mean, waiting to speak on the privilege of the floor, this meeting stands adjourned. Everyone have a safe night, and
Oh, tomorrow we'll be at the East Race.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So you'll be there. You'll be back?
I'll be back.
We'll go get it on there.
Okay.
Right Water Rafton Team, represent the council.
It'll be great.
Sharon, you should, you should join us. We need four people.
Good night, everybody. Thank you so much. Good night. Hi, we'll be cheering team council. Go Lori, Henry, and Kenneth.
Go for it. Good luck. Have a good night.
I'm texting out to everybody, like, to our team, like.